Good evening. Let's call the meeting of the Acton School Committee, November 14, 2017, to order at this time. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
None.
Reporting out on the executive session from October 10, 2017, there was no action taken at the end of our session. Any comments from the public?
We have 30 minutes allotted.
Yeah, you've got all kinds of time. All right, let's go to Celebration of Learning.
Awesome. Number three on Celebration of Learning is Meet the New Employees. We have three people here tonight I'd like to introduce, and they'd like to tell the board a little bit about themselves as well. We have a few minutes to do that. I have Will, Chad, and Sally. And we're going to start with Will. Will, could you just -- this -- Will Cody, who works as an evening custodian for us, and we hired you when, Will?
Last spring.
Right.
Seven months.
Seven months, and I thought maybe you could just let the board know how it's going.
I like it a lot. I get a lot of wide range of things to do, like waxing floors, painting, sometimes get to mow the fields and snow removal.
Probably many of you know Will.
Yes.
Will went to school here. He's also a local businessman.
He is.
And he does a nice job for us. And we're happy to have Will on. And you voted him in last spring, and we figured we'd have him come down during the shift just to say hi.
And to advertise your apple orchard.
Yeah. Well, from apple orchards. Intro to 11:40.
Very good. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
I think next we'll have Chad DePrisco. Now, some of you have seen Chad before. He's been in and out with some presentations. We hired Chad on in the spring as a second grade teacher when we split the class last, actually last winter, and then we brought him on as a full-time teacher as well. So you've seen a little bit of Chad, but I asked him if he'd come tonight and tell you a little bit about himself and a little bit about what his class is doing.
Absolutely. So, a little bit about myself. I am a new resident over in Shapley. So I'm super close to here, I'm about five minutes away. So I'm very involved here all the time, even on the weekends. In my classroom, we've been diving into center learning for ELA. I've been introducing this to my class solely over time, and they're doing a lot better with it. I've been looking at NWEA data. We've been doing this as a cohort and as a whole school. And we're individualizing the learning in my classroom by looking at this data. And I've created a full spreadsheet for all my students, and I can see the lagging standards for each student across the board. And you can really tell which students really get the standard and which students really need to work on it. And you can see that each student is very, very different. And we're using our iXL program on Kids Corner to individualize this way. And PLTW, Project Lead the Way, I know I spoke a lot to this during the capstone last year. My kids are completing their first project in the classroom. They're building a cooler. The problem of the lesson is that they have obstacles that they're bringing to a soccer game, but no cooler. And they need to learn how to solve this problem. We've been learning about heat transfer, conductors, insulators, and have a whole host of just random supplies for the kids to use and try out. So I have a heat lamp in the room. They're going to build their coolers this week, and we're going to test it out. Yeah, in math, we just finished up addition, and we're getting into subtraction now. And we're chugging right through all of our curriculum, and they're doing such a great job.
So this is second grade?
Yes.
Second grade.
Yeah, just one second grade this year. So, and last year I was co-teaching with Riley McCabe. This year I'm kind of on my own. But I have a great support system around me, like cohort leader, and all the other teachers down there are very helpful. So, I'm loving it here.
Chad fits right in perfectly.
Good for you.
Really does. Any questions from the board for Chad while we're on?
Anything.
What are some of the centers you've got?
There you go.
Oh, absolutely. Thanks, Kevin. I'm glad you asked. One of the newer centers I just introduced is Spelling City. It's one of our online programs for spelling. A lot of kids, they just routinely write out their spelling words over and over and over again, and you expect them to learn it. I found it didn't work. With this program, they can actually learn the words, break them down, play some fun games that are associated with those words. And I found that that knowledge really transfers over into their writing. Because before, they would have their spelling lists, and they were getting all those words wrong in their writing. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So with this new program, I'm seeing it actually transfer over into their writing. So that's one of the centers. Another one is individual reading, have them reading by themselves. Group reading and phonics station as well.
Awesome.
Very good. Good for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chad. Of course.
You sound like you enjoy it here.
I love it.
Good, good for you.
Well, I'll know next year how good you are. My grandson will be there.
Oh, very nice. No pressure.
No, not at all. So Mrs. Puffer, Sally Puffer, came to us last year as originally as an ed tech. And then Sally had an opportunity to help out this school district as an alternative, kind of an alternative program to help out a particular class and some individuals in that class that did a really nice job. And then towards the end of the summer, we needed to hire because our pre-K position, pre-K numbers had really blossomed. And at the time Heather Lavike, who was going to teach third grade, made the decision to go back to pre-K. We gave her that option, which opened a third grade position. And we were very, very lucky to have Mrs. Puffer apply, and we hired her very late in the summer. And she came in and hit the ground running. And I'm not sure many of you have really had a chance to meet Sally. So this is an opportunity for the board to get to know Sally a little bit.
I'll stand and be super tall feeling. I live right down the road, too. I live in Shapley, and I actually send my two kids here. So, to me, I bring that up because it speaks to how much I think Acton does such a great job for all their kids, the whole staff as a whole. Both professionally, I feel very supported, and as a parent, I feel, and one of them is actually in Chad's room, but I feel like they're getting a really good education. So I think you can't say anything better than I'm going to send my kids to this school. So I feel that is important to bring up. As far as what I'm doing in my class, I really try to make it somewhere that the kids would like to be, because I feel like they're not going to really be giving me their best or retaining much if they don't want to be learning and they don't want to be here. So hopefully, if you were to walk in my class, you'd see smiles and you'd hear conversation of kids using certain words that we've just gone over. Like when we're doing our math, I want to hear them saying math terms and adding, subtracting. Are you going to regroup this? And like, and I try to point that out to them, like, oh, I love the language that I'm hearing right now, and this is really great. And in math, I'm just starting to finish up subtracting and adding with regrouping, and I'm going to move into like a math menu where I can individualize where the kids are at. Because math is the subject for me that I see kids way over here and some kids way down here and then everywhere in between. So with this menu, they can look at it and say, okay, I need to work on multiplying. And they can go online, and I don't know if you guys are familiar with Porta-Portal it's called. So I can go on and list a bunch of different websites that have interactive games and videos to help them understand whatever math topic they're working on. And then when they feel like they have a grasp on it, and I'll meet with them too and workshop this as well, and they can test for that. So everybody can be at their own level and be showing mastery and growth in math where they need to be. Because right now, some kids are, I feel like, ready to move on, but as a whole, we're not. So I'm going to introduce this new math menu. In reading, we're doing a whole group Magic Treehouse lessons where we're doing geography and tying that in. We're doing where in the world do we live right now? And it's really interesting to hear third graders trying to think of like the big whole picture of the world, breaking it down to countries, continents, or I said that backwards, continents, countries, and going all the way down. So it's fun to see them being like, oh, yeah, that's right. We do live in Maine. That's a state and a country. So that's been really fun. And we've been doing a lot of videos with that and Google Earth searching. They've liked that, and it kind of shows them how big the world is. Because I don't want them to think it's just Acton and just Maine. So we explore that, and it's been really fun. So, that's about it.
Thank you.
Questions from the board?
Nice meeting you.
Yes, you too.
Awesome. Very good. Well, thank you guys for coming in tonight.
Of course.
For every presentation of our new staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Will, get right back to work, okay?
Best-looking guy on staff, Will.
There you go.
I'm talking about the custodians. Okay. That was very nice. Very good. So, look now, we're at number four, and I'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Oh, where is Jen today?
Oh, yeah, she's out. That's right.
Short-term.
She's out.
So who's taking that?
She's going to take it from the video.
Oh, she's going to take it?
Yeah.
Okay. The motion was by who?
Mary.
Mary, and seconded by?
Kevin.
By Kevin. Any discussion? Are all those in favor?
Can I ask a question? Am I late?
Are you late? No, we haven't got there yet.
No, about the consent, on something like, no? All right, okay. I'm just going to ask about something on.
We're getting there.
Oh, okay. Wait, I'm not late.
No, you're not late.
Not late to the party.
Okay, so now, let's see. We'll move now to our superintendent update next.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. One, I wanted to update the board and the public. Our next move for school-wide PBS has been made, and that is hallway expectations. As you know, we've started with voice levels throughout the school with a pilot last spring that went very well. So we met with the -- the PBIS committee's been fantastic. It's a representative sample of the staff throughout each cohort. We're working with our state consultant, who's Miss Pat Redd from the University of Southern Maine. We've been meeting with her regularly, and we need to roll out our school-wide expectations this year. So we started with hallways in addition to the voice levels. So what we've done is, we've come up with CAT cash. And each teacher has a certain number of CAT cash dollars. And when they find a student who is following our zero-to-five voice level or our new hallway expectations, which we're going to have posters up everywhere here pretty soon, they're being printed right now, and we can say something like, Judy, I just need to let you know that I caught you with a level-two voice right where you needed to use a level-two voice. That's awesome. And you get some CAT cash, and you put your name on it as a student, and it has the teacher's name on it, and it goes somewhere in the classroom when they go back to their classroom, wherever it is they were caught finding this. Put it in a basket, a hat, whatever that classroom has, and they dump them into the big jar up at the office. So if this thing is full, and we're almost there, by the Tuesday before we go into Thanksgiving, there'll be a school-wide celebration for the kids. So on Friday, at Friday Assembly, we're also going to be doing some drawings. The last Friday of the month at Assembly, we'll reach in and we'll pull out five kids, and we'll have something there for them because it's an individual recognition of somebody doing something right. And we also decided we'll also pull one out because the teacher's names are on it, and we'll celebrate a teacher that day, too. And then when we hit Tuesday, I'm pretty sure this thing's going to be full, we're going to have on Tuesday, we're going to be serving some ice cream during lunch. And the younger kids thought it would be funny if I wore my favorite wig all day long. So I think if we fill that, Mr. Ross will be serving ice cream in a wig.
Your favorite wig, so you have a collection?
Yes, thank you for thinking about that. I have to pick which color. Thank you. So that's one of our new fun things we're doing at school. We're going to be rolling out lunch expectations and bus expectations soon. We'll probably do those in tandem at the same time through the holidays. And then we'll be taking a look at recess and also bathrooms. So those are our common areas. And the philosophy behind PBIS is you teach the expected behavior. If you think about it, we teach a lot of things. So we're now teaching expected behavior in this organization. And the kids are really, and the staff have really embraced this. So we're really looking forward to rolling those out. So that's PBIS for school-wide with hallways. Just my last announcement is, it's Monday. Rest of this week is regular school schedule with a Friday assembly, and then Monday, Tuesday next week, and then we're off Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody next week. Thank you.
Next week?
Next week?
Next week is Thanksgiving.
It is.
I gotta look that up.
It is.
It really is.
Okay. Now, Jeanette, do you have some questions about something in the consent agenda?
No, nothing, no question. I'm just going to say thanks to Andy and the crew and whatnot that kept the school all going with the water pipes and all these other problems we seem to keep cropping up and only missed one day of school with the generator and all that that went on. I don't know.
You were very fortunate compared to a lot of other school systems that lost a lot of their snow days already.
Yeah.
Yeah, very, very fortunate that we.
I get nervous every time I see this Johnson-Jordan vehicle go by my house, and I say, oh, no. Because we're the only place they go, right? There's nothing up the road. Yes, I saw them go by. I say, oh, God.
They'll be back again tomorrow, too.
We're going to lease them a Nissan Bakery van, just so it throws you off.
Because there's nothing up the end, right? There's not, we're it. We're it. Or at the Acton Trading Post, if I see them there, I say, uh-oh.
Anybody have any questions or comments about any of the administrative reports?
What did I read about, I think, three staff members went somewhere regarding PBIS?
PBIS, yeah, the presentation of an Auguste. Yeah, I wanted to say kudos on that.
Yeah, I thought that was good. That must mean they like what we're doing.
You want to speak to that at all?
It went well. It was me, Dave Cody, and Margaret Lagotti. And what we presented was just a summary of what we did last year in preparing.
How you started.
The faculty and just the whole process of meeting in the committee and taking ideas back to the cohorts and bringing feedback back to the committee, incorporating that feedback, sending it back out to the cohorts again to make sure that there was that consistency in communication. And they gave us an hour and 15 minutes. I thought, I have 15 slides. I thought that it would never, ever, we actually had people telling us, you got to go, we have somebody else coming in. They had, the people who came in were either in the very first stages like we were last year or considering options for their schools. And we got some good ideas from schools that are kind of where we are right now and have done some of the things we haven't yet. And we were able to give some, just, I guess, like a good overview.
Yeah.
Like Johnny said, a 30,000-foot view of what's possible.
Now, were we asked to go to this?
Pat Redd asked if we would participate and present. She was hoping that she could get groups from all the schools that she works with to go.
Right. Oh, very good.
So it was, it went well.
Did the fact that you kind of ran overtime have anything to do with the fact that Dave
was part of you?
Oh, maybe Dave.
You know what? I had lived very well. I kind of drawn over the two of them into doing it because I didn't want to go by myself. And he was, he filled in very well because his perspective as a classroom teacher is different than my view passing kids in the hallway. So it was, what he shared was really valuable to like the people there who were in the classroom and were trying to figure out what their administrators were asking of them. So it did, he felt the times very well. Otherwise, I would have been dancing and stepping off the bus.
Dave's the chair of our steering committee. He's doing a great job.
That's good. Any questions from the reports?
Yeah, I just, with the PBIS, you mentioned that there's an implementation timeline. So like, what's the next, what are the next phases?
Well, we're doing, I mentioned the school-wide.
Yeah, yeah.
Which we're done, which will be pretty much most of the year. I'd like to get to the last one, which is probably going to be bathrooms before April break, and then our school-wide implementation will be complete. So the idea is to do one school-wide, like voice levels, add another school-wide and recognize voice levels in that one, then recognize voice levels in the next one. So the CAT cash, when we hit bathrooms, will be for a student following any of the school-wide expectations in the five areas we've learned. We're on area two right now.
So what are the other, what are the other areas?
So it's, so right now, we've done, we've done voice level, and we just did hallways. And we're going to do reset, excuse me, we're going to do buses and lunch at the same time. Because we think we can, because buses is kind of unique, and we're going to actually work with Ledger. They're very interested in partnering with us, and they'll have CAT cash, but we got to bring the bus drivers onboard with some training. And then we're thinking of doing the actual, with the kids, we talked about this briefly, that maybe when they're departing, we build in a little earlier release time to get them on their buses and do some training on the bus about what proper seating looks like. It's kind of hard to do in the classroom, but physically do it on the bus. And then after that, we would do recess, teach them recess, you know, know what the rules are, know what the expectations are. And then bathrooms would be the last one, and those are our school-wide areas. You notice I just went rules and I flipped it to expectations? Because when I met with the middle school, I met, I meet with each cohort when we unroll the new expectations, and I say, isn't expectations, expectations is about you, rules is about where you are. Follow the rules, or these are your expectations. See the difference? So we're trying to put it back on them, and I think they've been very receptive to it. The one piece I will add is PBIS isn't all just about reinforcing. It is. It's about teaching and reinforcing. But there's the other side, which is major and minor offenses of conduct. Right now, we're using our behavior rubric that the school has established, and that's what I use as the chief disciplinarian or whatever my role might be in any case, or the teachers are using that, too. But we will move over to listing major and minor kinds of behaviors and what those consequences might look like. And I'm really looking at a restorative process as well to add to that as we look at that. We haven't even looked at that yet. And then there's a data program called SWISS, which tracks where your major and minor issues are to help management figure out, well, isn't that interesting that the last six majors we've had have been over in that part of the hallway? Maybe we should see what's going on over there. So it'll steer us in directions of what's going on in our building if things are happening.
When we first started, do we have any data that we're looking to see improve? Do we have any sort of baseline data that we're?
To compare.
Like, how do we know it's working?
Right, right. That's a, that's a great question. I can't answer that question right now because we have nothing to compare our reinforcements and expectations because it's all brand new, so there's no baseline. The only thing I could do, and it'll be interesting, but I think it's going to be apples and oranges. And I'm sure Francine's very tired of this as my principal's intern this year, but she gets all the paper write-ups that become office referrals, and I just simply go, this one's yours. If it's big enough, it usually is a call to me, and I'm dealing with it, and I might bring Francine in and go, let's learn about how we handle this situation, because Francine's doing her internship for the principal's certificate. So she's been going through the paper referrals. So all I could probably do, Kevin, is look at the paper referrals and look at our new SWISS data and try to make some comparisons. That's probably the closest I could go, because I think the way SWISS is going to be set up is it's up to the faculty and the school to decide what's a major and a minor. So we kind of, really would probably get rid of our old conduct behavior rubric and go with something new.
Gotcha.
Right?
Because what I'm seeing is perhaps, hearing more about the PBS, I wonder if there's an opportunity here, knowing that we want to be more data-driven and being able to monitor progress. Here's something we've already got implementing, so I'm wondering what might be some progress indicators that we could, during the meetings, be looking at to sort of see what are we working towards in regards to that?
I can give you a simple.
Nothing complex.
Sure, a simple change if that's more anecdotal than anything else. There's a number of us that are student support people who get called if a teacher could just either use somebody to take them to Walker. And we know who, right now, we've kind of flipped it a bit, and it's really worked well this year. So if Mr. DePrisco was having a problem in a classroom and says, I could use some support, and he calls up to the front office.
Out of class referral.
Right? But what we're doing now is we're saying, so who is the student? And they're giving us the initials. And we kind of know who the student is from the class and the initials. And then we kind of try to send the right person who has that relationship with that kid. Believe it or not, I don't have great relationships with everybody. There's just some kids who look at me and they say, he's the principal. I'm going to shut down, and I'm not coming out from under that desk for Mr. Ross. But Mrs. Lagotti might be able to get that kid out from under that desk. And I might have something in the bank with one of the young men that has had a rough week. So I go down. So we've been a little more strategic about who our response is and how we respond. And that's not really even a PBIS piece. It's just something we learned from last year, and it's, there's been, there was kind of a, last year was interesting. There's a lot of what we call moving kids out of the room because of the behavior of another kid. Really haven't had to do that very much this year. There's been a few, but nothing like what it was last year. And I think our approach is a little bit different this year in regarding, I think we learned a little bit from PBIS, and I expect that to change even more as time goes on.
So a year from now, if we know, if we were to say, this is really working, what data do we have to know that?
We, well, we've got student surveys and other things built right into the PBIS program to help feed us information in regards to the students. My hope is, if we know it's working, you should be able to come in here a year from now and ask any student the expectations of either at their classroom or at the schoolwide, and they should be able to tell you, and they should be able to follow them. Because the other part of CAT cash is, I'm not only giving it to Judy for, because she did something right, I'm telling her what she, I'm telling her that the expectation that I saw. Judy, here's CAT cash. You did a wonderful job using a voice level two in the hallway. It's not good job. Good job means a lot of things. Good job to me, and I ran, and you're giving me CAT cash. So we're very specific and intentional about what we're doing, the messaging we're sending children for what their expectations are that they achieved.
Are we looking to see decreases in any, like, I think there was issues like, probably prior to doing PBIS, like, we got it to address some problems, some challenges that we were struggling with. I'm trying to recall what those were. I think there was like, there was, there'd been an increase in challenging behaviors at the classroom level?
They're probably, I would say, I'm going to look over to Patty, because there's been an inch, there's a couple of classes that have some interesting personalities in them, like any school. That has its own set of challenges. Well, with overtime, just some kids mature. That's helpful, right? Give it another year, they're different kids. So there's that. Time is our friend often. But also approaching them with trying to see that the glass is half-full versus half-empty seems to have some effect on it, too. Not with all kids, but with most kids. Eighty percent of our children should be able to respond, just like in RTI, to a PBIS-type program. And then that other 20%, it depends. Depends on the student, depends on the issues, depends on what's going on in their life. What do you think so far? I can tell you're thinking about it, because I know you well enough now to know that you're...
No, I think it's fantastic. I think it's great. I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity here. How can we?
Depends on the student, depends on the issues, depends on what's going on in their life. What do you think so far? I can tell you're thinking about it because I know you well enough now to know that you're...
No, I think it's fantastic. I think it's great. I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity here. How can we...
Yeah.
Because it's just historically, we get descriptive information about this is good, this is how things are, this is where things are at. But in the sense of...
With two years of data from SWISS, we could say we had fifteen majors in the first quarter, first term.
So Swiss is the tool that PBS uses.
Correct.
What does it measure?
It measures majors and minor offenses as defined by the school.
Okay, so are we starting to track that?
Not yet. That's why I said it's apples and oranges. Right now, I have the paper referrals. Soon, we don't know when soon is, we will get SWISS. We're speaking with Pat tomorrow. She'll be in about that.
When you say paper referrals, what are those?
It's an office referral form, the name of the student, the incident, what happened, and then on the backside, the follow-up, who was the administrator that dealt with it?
So we have that data?
Absolutely.
So I'm curious...
Each kid has their own file now.
So I'm curious as to sort of like, I wonder what the data, maybe the next time is, to get a sense of what does the referral data look like? Because I'm getting a sense that over time, we want to see referrals decrease.
Absolutely.
So that's what I'm sort of saying, so if like each month, or like periodically, quarterly, is when we looked in September, we were having on average fifteen referrals a week, if that's going to be... See what I mean?
But to compare the referral form we have now, which might be student was disrespectful to teacher, that doesn't give me much. Okay, so what did the teacher do about that disrespectful student is my first question. How did that become an office referral? We need to be more strategic in why is it an office referral versus just a teacher dealing with a classroom management issue. Right now, we get a lot of classroom management issues on the paper that I feel could be and are being dealt with quite well at the classroom. But sometimes it just needs to be pushed up the food chain. It just has to, and I get that. But the majors and minors in PBIS are developed by the faculty to really specifically measure, is this a major or minor? And then the consequences would follow if it's a major or minor. And depending on what it is, I think the historical rubric that we have on behaviors can kind of be put aside, and we go with our new model. Because I do want to see the restorative piece. Fortunately, we don't have a lot of violent behavior at the school. But if you think of just like a fight, that really kind of a fight, not an argument, but a fight. Well, you know what? Often that person who does the fighting gets punished. And if the person who was in the fight did something to deserve it at some level, they kind of get punished, and we move on. In a restorative piece, those, given the right situation, those people would have a chance to see each other, talk about why we did this, and how it felt, and what happened, and how would we do this differently? Because the one who gets punished is usually the one that's dealt with. And the person that maybe got hurt doesn't even know what happened and doesn't have any follow-up or any restorative piece. So as we go down that road with the consequence side, it's important to me that we have the restorative piece too. So that people learn...
And that's not PBIS.
No.
Okay.
I bring that over from some of my other work.
That's JR.
JR? John Ross. So I think that maybe moving forward, if we can get periodically sort of just the data in regards to whatever it is you're collecting, not extra work, but more sort of... Even if it's apples and oranges right now, if we do have paper, I'd be curious to see. I'm curious as to how many referrals we're getting, you're getting, and that sort of thing. And then, or maybe even qualitatively, like when a kid gets referred, there's various reasons they can be referred, correct?
Correct.
So some are major, some are minor?
Pretty much. And then we go to the rubric that is what it is. Nine times out of 10, if it's something where there's going to be some... It's going to be a detention or an in-school, it's going to be me dealing with the parent and the kid.
Gotcha.
Other than that, Francine, can you give me kind of a run-of-the-mill one? Because really, thank you so much for dealing with 95% of them. I'm dealing with the ones that could potentially be an issue. And Francine's with me, so I'm like, this is kind of the things you've got to look at because it's all fact-finding and due process and all that, that is years of experience. You just kind of get a sense of how to do that. But what's a run-of-the-mill one that any of your kids might, you can think of today?
I had a couple of students who were on their way to get on the bus instead of following the hallway procedures, and being reminded a few times. Once they got to this door here, we're just elbowing each other and shoving each other back and forth. And so they got written up from a hazard.
And they didn't get the cat cash, I assume?
No. Not for me. So I had to let them both know because they were on the way to the bus, and both were, you know, they missed the bus and all that. I said, when you come back tomorrow, there's going to be a write-up for both of you on this, and we'll deal with this tomorrow and talk about it. I expect both of you to go home and tell your parents that I'm going to call them tomorrow. And when I called the parents the next day, they said they got off the bus and told them that they had been roughhousing in the hallway and knew that there was going to be a call the next day. So even by voicing that to the students, saying, this was the expectation, you were not able to meet it, and they could explain to me exactly what it was they should have been doing, what mistake that they made, and how they can fix it. Just by them going and telling their parents what they did, I was... They owned up to it, and I think that's probably the worst consequence in the world they could do is say that they got in trouble and their punishment was to go and confess to their parents. And so when they came in, I wrote them up because they could have... There were little kids all over the place, and they could have hurt somebody. And then we talked about it again. And since then, I've probably passed them 100 times in the hallways, and they've both been so much better. So it's little things like that. Sometimes it's behavioral. Sometimes somebody just pops off to their teacher, and it's just one comment too much. And any sort of trying to kind of quell the situation by the teacher doesn't work. And then I may get a student who comes and we just need to talk about being respectful in the classroom. And I've even reminded teachers a few times that we do need to teach some of our students how to be respectful because they don't hear respectful conversations in their homes all that often. And they don't understand what it means when you say, you need to be respectful. What does that mean?
Yeah, what does it mean?
So we have to demonstrate that by asking questions and being socratic in our conversations. So it's just, it's a process. So anything that does come across my desk that, if I dig into it a bit, and there's much more going on under the surface than what was caught, then I go right to Mr. Ross with that. I'm not ready to diffuse any bombs on my own yet. I don't think.
So how hard would it be to sort of like next month, next time we meet, get data in regards to the number of incidents, like minor?
It wouldn't be majors and minors, but it would be...
Like whatever, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the reason I'm saving these is mostly for my own. If I didn't deal with it, I don't even like those two kids, and we would never name them in a public meeting, but I'll just... Suzie and Bobby, right? I didn't even deal with Suzie and Bobby. But if Suzie and Bobby, or one of them, the other, then got in a playground tussle and it became mine, I have a track record of something that happened too. And I can see, hey, this isn't working well for Suzie or Bobby. So it's not a permanent record thing. It's just year to year with the kids. I have those, and we could do a physical tally of what we're doing and how we're doing it. I don't have much to compare it with because I don't have other years' data on that.
No, but I'm wondering, like, if it was monthly, so we've got, so from November to December, these were the data.
Yeah.
And then it'd be interesting to see what those say. But then, December to January, then we would start to see patterns. And ideally, we would know what we would be looking for. And I'm just thinking, because that's something I know we've been striving to do, is sort of have a little more of an oversight role in regards to meeting goals. That's something that's already, we were investing so much in that...
And by state statute, we have to report suspensions and expulsions. Well, there isn't a whole, there's no expulsions. And there's a few suspensions over the time I've been here, and those go into infinite campus. And those get uploaded to the state, so they'll see Acton School, and there'll be a code. Kids aren't named, no number of suspensions. There's probably a public records somewhere you could look it up. But this other data is all just very in the office.
Yeah, but that sounds like the perfect kind of, it's the local data. It's the smaller data, which I think would give us an indicator of culture and the effectiveness of PBIS. That's a little bit more than anecdotal. But that would, I don't want it to be a ton of work. That sounds like it would be...
Well, we could lay it out and see what it looks like. I can let you know if it would be a ton of work.
Yeah, I don't want it to be...
I'd have to pull it all out and look at it.
But like some simple indicators that we can sort of see each month, just to see how it's progressing.
Yeah, and what's really interesting too is without even looking at them, I can tell you that 80% of them are going to be the same small group of people. And those are the ones that we're constantly working with and making better choices. And what I'm most interested in is how is the individual...
Is there a reduction for those individuals?
That's what I'm looking for.
But that's a sign of progress. Okay, PBS is, that's working. That would be cool.
And you've already seen a big difference from last year.
I personally feel that, maybe it's because I got my legs under me a little more solidly opening school this year, but I just, it is a different feel. There's just, I don't know, it's a different feel. You have a different class. What I mean, you know, so everybody has a different class this year. Everybody's moved out one. But I think we're responding to the kids' behaviors a little bit differently too. And I'll give our kids credit. We have some kids that have some challenges, and the other kids kind of ignore them. They're doing a nice job ignoring so-and-so when he's doing this all the time or having a real problem until we can kind of defuse the situation and get him back to a regular place. The kids are kind of like, I'm kind of, you know...
Kind of like I can keep ignoring Mary over here.
But then I do.
That sounds great.
Any other questions from the consent agenda?
I did have one more, not about PBIS. Are we still doing, remember Eileen was helping write grants? Is that still happening?
Not currently for any specific grant, but she's more than willing if one comes down the line.
So we do still have capacity? Do you know if we still have capacity for grant writing?
We have the capacity, but we haven't been chasing anything lately.
Okay.
Okay, then.
Thank you.
Let's move on to committee reports. And we'll start with the long-range planning committee. And have an update from the meeting today.
Go to it, Andy.
You want me to take it tonight?
Yes, and then when we get to seven one, the update meeting.
One of the major items that we talked about will be discussed on the new business, which is the installation of the water pumps. We spent some time tonight just reviewing. We've put a lot of the capital improvement projects on a spreadsheet and plotted them out on a timeline. We're five years out on our long-term planning. And we're just having some discussion now of how we want to go about requesting funding for these projects and just putting them, you know, on a priority basis of, you know, which is the most important based on safety, based on, you know, life expectancy of certain items. So that when we swing into budget season, we're going to have a good grasp on where we want to go and what we're going to be looking at requesting for funding in the next year and then the following years after that. So that's about it.
And we have those spreadsheets to look at at budget time?
Oh, absolutely.
So, yeah, we could all... Policy committee.
We met and went over this infamous fund balance policy. There are a few word changes. Looks okay to me now. Uh-oh. It's going to come on the file under DIA. Hopefully, this is the end of this story. You have anything to say?
This basically is the fund balance policy. The things that were added, there were a few things in the definitions to make them, to define them a little bit better. We also added the legal, so the state statutes, the legal references for Title 20 and which ones in particular affected our fund balance policy. We did discuss how we calculate our fund balance policy and that, you know, the way it is works really well. And we still stay within the 3% rule. We, you know, we haven't changed from that. So this is more just about, again, adding legal references and being a little more specific in definitions and adding examples a little bit better on the bottom.
Does this have to be voted on, the changes?
Well, this was, we adopted it in 2014 in November. We reviewed it.
So we're just saying review?
Just a review.
To approve the review. It was language change.
We don't need to do two reads on this, though, do we?
No.
No. So this is good and...
Not on these changes. This is the first time you've seen it with the changes.
So let's have a motion to accept the fund balance policy as amended and reviewed.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? I'd just like to throw in here that Kim did a very nice job up at the selectmen's meeting tonight explaining and clarifying that we do have a fund policy, fund balance policy, and that we do follow the 3% rule, even though we don't have to. We choose to. We have our own policy to do that. So she did a really good job making that crystal clear as far as I'm concerned.
And that was tonight?
Was that clear?
Yes, that was tonight.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
So it's clear.
Probably the clearest thing that I heard at the hour that I was there. What the heck? All right.
So they filmed the videotape.
Let's move on to new business, and we'll have water pump replacements.
So we need to take a vote because we're going to take some money out of the capital reserve to pay for the breakdown of the water pumps that happened here. And so I will read the motion so everyone's clear on where it's coming from. I make a motion to authorize the school to expend $8,927.50 from the designated capital reserve account to cover the cost of the pump motors and installation invoiced from Greenleaf Plumbing Incorporated.
Can you read that one more time, please?
Oh, you don't have a copy of it?
Where is it?
It's in there somewhere. It's on the other side. It's on the other side of...
I'll find it.
But I will read it again.
That'd be great.
Okay.
I found it, I got it right here. Good, thanks.
So you can read it by yourself?
I'm good.
We need a breakdown? You going to read it again?
I missed this one I was reading.
So just to be clear, we have about $50,000 in that capital reserve, which we haven't touched. And so it'll be $50,000 minus $8,927.50.
That was my question.
So Mary made the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Jeanette? Any further discussion? All in favor? Seven two is update on the storm.
Andy and I haven't really reversed this. I just said, why don't we just kind of tell the story of the storm? And I'll...
The great storm.
We'll see how this goes. And at least one lesson learned for me, and I think the way we'll handle it in the future, but kind of an overview, I think we did very, very well in comparison now, you know, two weeks out from what happened to other schools. But Andy texted me the night before and said, any concerns with the storm? The night before, and I wrote, what storm? So he was already on it. And I'm like, all right, Andy, this is Sunday night. He's texting me. I'm like, okay, you know, it looks like some wind. I don't know, I'll let you know in the morning. So, boy, the morning came, and it was like the Wizard of Oz at my house. And we started to talk. So why don't you take it from there? What happened on your end? Because you and I started talking around 4:30, quarter to 5:00 in the morning.
Yeah, I mean, I was nervous the day before. That's why I started bugging John. And I really think that it was, the storm itself really surprised a lot of people, and it was, you know, just brought wind and rain that was kind of just unexpected. And not ever having closed school due to a non-related snow event was a little bit of a challenge. But I was, I had a pretty good idea of what was happening. I had my town radio on all night, so I knew what the road crews were up to. I knew what fire and rescue was up to most of the night. The alarm went off here at 2:00 in the morning, so I was out and about. So when I made contact with John early that morning, that following morning, I had a pretty good, you know, idea that we were going to be closing. But like I said, since we've never had discussions of closing school not snow-related, the planning and mindset was a bit different. So we communicated a lot, and he was communicating with other surrounding schools. And Eileen was in the loop as far as sending the Blackboard Connect message. So there was a lot of things happening all at once early that morning. And we kind of were mutually, you know, on board with a two-hour delay at first, but then as things quickly unfolded and got feedback from different people, it was obvious that we weren't having school.
So on my end, what's typical with a storm, when you know it's coming, is, you know, 4:30, quarter to 5:00 in the morning, the text messages from the area superintendents start going out. You know, what are you doing? What is your thinking? What's it look like? And I'm particularly interested in what's happening in Sanford because it's the same bus line. And we have Sanford High School kids that are Acton residents. So it kind of took, I think, the other districts a little bit by surprise because nobody was making a really fast decision. And I'm watching my text messages, and I'm watching my lights do this. And I'm like, oh, boy, I got to get to 6813. I've got a lot of things I need electricity for right now, so I'd like to find out what's going on. So I told Andy, we're going to go, definitely go, we're going to go into a two-hour delay. That buys us a little time until it gets light out to know what we're dealing with. So no other school had made a decision. And I'm like, well, we're going to go with a two-hour delay. And I called David down in Sanford, and I said, this is one of the lessons learned. I need to be able to get to my Acton Sanford High School kids because if the roads are going to be a two-hour delay for our littler kids, then the buses aren't rolling for them. I mean, at that point, we had roads closed. I knew that. So I'm like, we're not even going to get out up here. Up a county road somewhere, something was happening.
County road, Youngs Ridge.
Youngs Ridge wasn't happening, so I'm like, this isn't happening. So I wanted the two-hour delay. And he says, well, David was funny. He goes, well, just don't close school for Sanford. And I go, well, I can't close school for Sanford. Because we all have our own key, and we call up the media, and I don't have the authority to close Sanford. I go, can I get to my Acton residence? He goes, I don't think I can. It's like he had no way of telling just Acton kids, buses aren't coming. So I'm like, oh, jeez, this is going to be a tough one. So within minutes, though, I'm watching news centers online, and I see, and I see David say, we're closing for the day. So I'm like, all right, we just went from a two-hour delay to a closure within five minutes, 10 minutes.
Yeah, because the calls came pretty close together.
They came super close together, I bet. So we did that, and that was great. And we got through the day at home, and everybody's home. And then, of course, then I got the staff. I'm like, people live all over the place. I've got people living in New Hampshire. I've got people living in Acton. I live up in the Wyndham area. Like, I have no idea how the staff's doing. So, you know, plan on beans tomorrow. I did the whole "Ben to work. Come in your pajamas if you have to. Please just come." I understand that getting up with no power is no fun, but, you know, and I'm so proud of the staff. We had one call out, and I think that was already pre-done. It was ours. She already knew, had the day off. So, everybody came in the next day, and we were up and running. The generator ran until ten, and then the power came on, and smooth sailing for the rest of the week. And other districts, as you know...
Three days.
Yeah. Bonn Eagle was out until Friday morning, nine o'clock, the entire week, and then they did a delay till nine o'clock to get them in there. So, we fared well.
It's been fifty-seven days out a couple of days.
So, my one issue, I think we've solved it. I think I, we have solved it, right? Okay, good. I look at Mike, because it was one of those, you can't have a kid in two schools and account for them. So, either a Sanford kid or an Acton kid in IC. So, we've set up a situation where Sanford can call school and tell just the Acton residents, "There's no school in Sanford today," but Sanford could run regular school. And I can give you another good reason to do this. Say, we get snow and they don't.
Yeah.
And say, Acton Ridge Road is a foot and a half, and it's kinda raining down in Sanford.
They don't have to come up here.
Right. We have a reason for it. The way I see it is, if it's, if it's, the inclement weather is unsafe enough not to run it for the elementary kids, why would I run it for the high school kids? They live in the same town. So, we have to close for them, too. So, we now have arrangements that we can let Sanford know Acton's done. You guys can make your independent decision, and they'll let the Sanford High School kids know they're in Acton. No buses are coming. You're not expected to school today, even if they do have school.
All right. So, you can also ask Jeanette how the roads are, because she went out to find out.
Our local Acton storm chaser.
She was the scout.
She starts texting us what's going on.
My car was the filthiest car I ever saw. There wasn't another car that looked like mine after riding around all these roads. I couldn't believe it. I had to go through the car wash.
We had to reroute.
Jeanette, don't go out, Jeanette.
Well, I had to...
Get out of nowhere.
You know what? People, yeah, people threw sheets out over the wires, because you couldn't see the wires hanging down. I, some, there was a big sheet hanging over. That was a good sign, but...
It was nice for you that somebody warned you.
I know, because I didn't, I didn't see the wire. Anyway, it was quite...
So, we overall fared well. Staff did great. Kids did great. Andy and the crew, everybody, really A pluses, and it was one of those learn-as-you-go. And I think it was learn-as-you-go for a lot of communities, because we didn't really see this coming, but we really, I gotta emphasize, we did well. We missed a day. Lot of school, very few schools that missed a day. They missed more than a day, and some missed almost the entire week.
So, our students will be enjoying summer while the others are still in...
Perhaps. We'll see how, what the winter brings us.
And is the reverse possible, too? I don't, I can't, I don't know what the scenario might be, but where, we're not closed, but Sanford is?
Uh, yes. Then they would just, they would...
Close their kids?
They would, right.
And our high school kids would be off?
The high school kids would be off, right?
The high school was closed.
The high school kids, we could still be open.
No, no, but I mean, the high school had no power, but the rest of the building...
In Sanford, yeah.
I think that was like the third day.
Third day. They had different issues.
They had different...
Didn't they have some schools closed and other schools open?
No. All the grade, all the smaller schools were open. It was just the high school that was closed.
That's confusing.
And a lot of districts, it's the school, the generator was open and the other ones weren't. Or that section of town got hit and the other side of the district didn't. There was a lot of interesting situations in bigger districts with multiple schools where not everything was open.
And my kiddies couldn't almost get to their doctor.
You were there right earlier.
I know, but I had to reroute quite a trip to get there, I'll tell you. I got out of the car, and I said, "My kitty's gotta see their doctor. I said, "Well, you can't come down this road."
Yeah, but like, my cable was out. I don't know how people were even getting cell service, because I didn't have any. So, I was like, "Even if you made that call now, it'll go through, which you gotta take me off if you're the one in charge. I should not be on that list and be woken up at five, just so everyone knows. That's ridiculous."
Are you all getting blackboard?
Why am I on the list?
Are you guys getting blackboard messages?
Yeah, usually.
Okay.
I can't do the 5:00 AM.
Keeps us knowing what's going on.
Are you getting a phone call?
Yeah.
See, we can let, we can do phone calls to some and emails to others and texts to others.
Well, we can pull your email, we can pull your, we can make your phone private, so you don't get notified.
Yeah, my phone wasn't picking up like last year's problems, and now we woke up, and like, "There's no school." My husband says, and I said, "Oh, good." Doesn't affect me.
How about tonight? Why don't we do this? So, the school board is listed as clients, people, and blackboard. Could you reach out to each school board member, because Amanda's not here, and ask if they want to be notified, and then if they want the phone call, the text, or the email, or what combination of, and then we can update it? Would you do that for us? That'd be awesome, because I get it. If you're getting a phone call, I get why you don't want that phone call.
I'm good.
I can figure it out.
I'm, I'm good.
I'm good, the way I am.
What? Your phone's not ringing?
Well, Amanda will...
No. I just put it on text. I just put it on email.
Email, right.
So, and Amanda, yeah, she probably watched everything on there anyway, because she has...
You don't have a generator?
Yeah, I have a generator.
Didn't come on?
I didn't have cable.
Take care of Mary, and the rest of us are cool.
I didn't have cable. Our stuff comes from...
You have an automatic generator? Generac?
Yeah, basically, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I got.
Okay. All right. Let's move on now. Anything else on the storm? We're all stormed over?
The other thing is, is, you know, opening the school, I don't understand. Maybe, you know, people just don't know that, you know? If the generator's on here, I mean, especially when it gets cold and if there's a winter storm, you know, that we're open here for them. You know, that's why we invested in that generator. It was for the community, and I don't think people know that. Like, how do we get that word out?
We, I might need some help. We definitely took care of it at our end with our blackboard letting on. So, that gets to parents and you folks.
But not the community.
And the fire department and Jen.
Did it on the sign, and Jennifer did it at the town hall.
What's up in Acton, Facebook.
In the fire department and what's up in Acton. I think, I think a lot of, I think most people got the message that if they wanted to come here and shower, get warm, charge their cell phones and so forth, they could.
Yeah, we had, we had hours, and I mean, Eileen did a great job organizing it.
Yeah, she did.
We posted hours. We had a sign-in sheet so that we could keep track of, you know, how many people were coming, coming in, so that we knew how many people utilized the building. So, we had a use.
There were some good reports on what's up in Acton, too, about they appreciated the school being open and how great it was to get in and be able to take showers and to charge their cell phones and stuff, so...
So, there might be a thing where just like, so maybe some, I wonder what additional communication strategies might be available? Like, for example, would it be possible to get a slide on the public channel? They've got some of the PowerPoint slides that run in.
At one time, like, when we first started doing it, and the town created a policy that when, when, we're without power, I think it's for forty-eight hours.
Yeah. So, it might be good to have a slide that might just become stock.
The school will open as a, as a, you know, facility to shower or charge your cell phones. But usually, it takes, you know, Kim Stacy Horn was the one who reached out to us this time to make that initial contact, to kinda get the ball rolling. So, typically, the selectmen will get the ball rolling. We'll, you know, put our pieces in place and then make it happen. So, we've done it before. The good thing is, is, you know, like Mary said, "We're here. We're staff. We have the power." You know, we have the power when we don't have power. So, it's a good thing for the community. We want the community to be aware, you know, if we're here, if it helps one person, great. If it helps twenty people, great, so...
I think, Dean, there were a couple of pieces that I think Andy mentioned to me that were additional that weren't in the past. One I know of, he may know of. The other one is, we, that he does know, is we had a very organized sign-in sheet with, "If you sign your name, you're agreeing to these kinda terms and conditions of using our facility," like pack in, pack out, simple things like that. Gender identi, you know, go to the right room kinda thing. So, it was really clear, because we're bringing the public in.
Right.
It's after school hours, and we have people here, but it was well-organized, and Eileen was really good at getting all that information together for us. The other one that's behind the scenes, and most people don't think of, is we're also a Red Cross shelter. So, I was working with the chief a lot on Tuesday, not on Monday, because we didn't have school on Monday, on Tuesday with, "Hey, how, how, what's Southern Maine EMS doing? And are we gonna need to, am I gonna have to hand you the keys to the school," pretty much? And it never came to that. And then he also said, "You know, if it was ever to the point where Red Cross had to take over a building, it would probably be Sanford. It would probably be a place with more population," is what he told me. And I said, "Man, I never really thought of that." But that, we are a location site, and at that point, you know, we do pretty much do hand over to the EMS, "Here you go, and you shelter in place here at the building. We have everything."
I think they did have a little more going on at the Memorial Gym, because people were able to go there and sleep if they wanted to, I think, so I think there was more...
And cots out, yeah.
Yeah, I think there was more going on there. And I think the Memorial Gym has been used before as, as a shelter and place to get something to eat and stay warm and...
I think if this was January, we would've seen a different response, but it was sixty-four degrees the day of the storm, and I don't think it got below forty at any night that power was out for that full, full week.
So, are, based on what people are saying, do, do enough of the community know that that's unavailable to them?
I like the slide idea.
I, I don't know now, but you took over and bought the generator.
The other thing people utilized, too, a lot of people came in and got water.
No, we're saying now, even if every, so often, just say, just so you know, if there's any power outages, come to the school.
This should be common knowledge. I don't think it's common knowledge.
Yeah, I don't think it's common.
I don't know if you can just say, "Come to the school if the power..."
No, no.
Unless something's already set in place.
The school's set up as an emergency shelter.
The school has to be set up, and like, you know, Eileen set it all up and organized it, so it was the sign-ins and all that. So, there's a process now in place.
There is.
Which is, which is good. But we have to make sure that we have somebody here to follow through that process. So, if you just say, you know, "If the power's off, you can come to the school,"
Yeah, but you could say, check with, you know, just something simple that the school is an emergency shelter for people, but you have to check at the town hall or something.
Yeah. And it was, it was, it was confined to certain hours, because we only have people here for certain hours.
Oh, that, and I mean, John and Eileen worked it out around student activities as well, so it didn't interfere with anything that was going on at the school.
Is there a notice that can be permanently posted at the town hall? People going in and out, they might see it?
Perhaps. I don't wanna speak for the town hall, but I would think so.
Yeah. Maybe that's just check with Jen, maybe just something, because this is something we want people to know before there's an emergency, that they know what's going on.
Right. Being proactive.
But I also wonder, maybe that's just a note we can put into when we do the budget booklet? Just that, you know, when we're talking about the year in the past, that it was utilized as part of it, that's...
The storm.
Because, again, it's part of the value added of this building and this piece, so I think that's something we, maybe that's a little note that we add to our budget booklet. That was great.
Okay. Let's move on to seven-three, which is new employee.
We, we had to hire a one-on-one ed tech at the high school, because we had a second child who needed services. And we hired Patrick O'Toole. He's from Lyman, and he started, he's, he's had, he's actually a teacher, but he was hired as an ed tech three, and he is, had one year's experience, so he's at step one for an ed tech three. And he's getting along quite well with the students, so that's good.
So, the, so the one-on-one ed techs that are at the high school, they're our?
Yeah. They're our, they are.
Our student.
Okay. Makes sense.
And we found out today, it's like some, sometimes when the students are on vacation, that Dylan and I had to work out real quick, because we hadn't had that in the past, is when, like, one of the students happens to be on vacation this week, so we've actually had that person come here, and either they took a subposition for me or their support.
Resources, resource.
Like, tomorrow, there'll be a support for our, can I say it? The evacuation? Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, of course.
You know, so we'll have an extra set of hands, too, for that whole process.
That's good. Great.
Okay. Seven-four, review of the draft budget timeline.
If I could just, with this one, Kim, I just need to ask a question. Did, when this went out, since the printing of this draft budget timeline, I asked him a question, and she went to the town with the question, and I think we have an answer now. And it had to do with, originally printed as five o'clock on Tuesdays is a...
Problem.
Problem. It's a problem for the select person who represents the school to be available for those, because she would be at a selectmen's meeting.
All right.
So, we, so would we come up with Monday instead?
Yeah. Best, if we, if we wanna have our meetings on, at, starting at five o'clock, the day that would work would be Monday, so that way Warren and Finance and our liaison person for the school will be able to attend all our budget meetings. The only issue of all the dates, instead of, we, we have February twentieth on here, but if you went to February twelfth, because that's, the nineteenth is a holiday, so it would end up being February twelfth instead of February twentieth. But all the other days, if you moved into Mondays, wouldn't, wouldn't hit any holidays.
Okay. I'll have to make some changes, because usually not available on any Monday nights.
Well, that's why we're talking, we don't have to. We could do Wednesday. I mean, could we do Wednesday? I made a recommendation of something other than Tuesday. It happened to be Monday is what you got for an answer.
Right. I gave him a choice of Monday or Wednesday, and Jennifer had said that Monday would've been a better day than Wednesday. I'm not sure if it was because of Warren. I'm not really sure why Wednesday was a problem.
Is that when they meet? Warren Finance, is that when they meet?
What's the conflict again? The selectmen?
Yeah, the selectmen, they have their meetings on the same night we do, which is on a Tuesday, only they have theirs at five. If we start our budget meetings at five, then our liaison for the selectmen cannot be at the budget meeting, which they really want to be at, at that station.
This has never been a problem before. Why is it a problem this year?
They changed their time.
They changed to Tuesday at five. They used to be Thursdays.
Yeah. We used to have Tuesday, Thursday, and now we have Tuesday, Tuesday.
I bet that was silly of them.
Or we could, could we, let me ask this. Could we do six o'clock on a Tuesday?
We could always do, stay at six.
But we have school committee on some of those, so it would have to be, the budget meeting would be after school committee, not before. That's the only way you can pull it off.
Well, we could maybe on those days that they combine, we could have our school committee meeting first at five, because we don't need anybody else here for that. Just our regular meeting, and then do the budget meeting at six. I think we, I think we did that somewhat.
I think we did that.
We've done that.
I like that.
That's a better solution, because then it stays on the date. We just change the time.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
We would only change the time then on February thirteenth and March thirteenth. Those are the...
So, February, February thirteenth and March thirteenth.
And March thirteenth.
So, that's, so February thirteenth becomes six o'clock?
So, February, well, let, let me, I'm sorry, let me back up a little bit. February thirteenth is the school committee meeting. We had actually put, this sheet had February twentieth, but...
It's the thirteenth, yeah.
Yeah.
I noticed that after, because that's a school, great.
That would be the school committee meeting first, right?
Correct. Five P.M.
Maybe it was because of vacation, was that it?
Yeah, you, we're not gonna have a budget meeting on that week of the nineteen through the twenty-four.
No.
Right, yeah. So, it would, should be...
February thirteenth?
On the 13th.
February, so I'm confused. February 20th is now February 13th?
Yes.
Correct.
Are there any other changes I'm making to this document?
I don't think so.
No.
And that's for us to make first, then.
The only difference is it'll be six o'clock instead of five o'clock.
For what?
Every day.
For the budget.
For the 23rd, the sixth.
Uh, but if I just put five o'clock, but.
Sure.
School committee and.
Give me one or the other.
No, 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 they're not all school committee. There's only the one Tuesday a month that's school committee. So the 23rd is six.
Wait, January 23rd is six?
Yeah, six.
So that's changing, okay.
February 6th is six.
Yeah.
There's no February 20th. It's February 13th. Five for the school committee, six for the budget.
Right.
And then March 6th would be six.
Right.
And March 13th would be six.
No way.
Well, it would be, that's another school committee night, so five o'clock for the committee and six for the budget.
So basically, except for January 6th, who is going to be here five o'clock every time anyway?
January 6th?
January 20, January 9th, I'm sorry.
January 9th?
January 9th. That, that's at six o'clock.
And February 13th.
But even on February 13th, we still need to be here at five because our school committee meeting will be five.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, oh, the six o'clock ones.
Yeah.
They're all six o'clock.
So that's, so January 23rd's changed.
It's six.
Six, February 6th is six.
Yeah.
13th still five, the 6th is six, the 13th is still five.
Right.
All right, I can put it in.
Got it?
And now I'll revise this and send it out again.
That would be good because my scratching isn't making a lot of sense.
This was just a draft anyway. I wanted to make sure we went over it before and then have a final one before I send it to like the town and the Warren Finance.
Just, just a question and process. Once this school, because it's our budget that we're working, once this school committee has set the dates, we're informing other parties when those times and dates are. And what we did is all the collaborative work upfront to make sure it worked for people. Is that correct?
Right, right.
Okay, so we're setting the dates with the committee tonight, okay?
One of the, the biggest key issues was April 3rd to make sure that that was, because that one's at seven. That's our special town meeting on the school budget.
That would be the final one.
And that's, that one, I wanted to make sure that Jennifer Rue didn't have an issue with that date at all.
I'm looking right now to January 9th.
Have you talked to her about that at all? I'm sorry. Have you talked to Jen at all about that yet?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, no, no. I wanted her to make sure that that wasn't, she's, she's, no, she knows what all the dates are, yeah, so.
I'm sorry, Kevin, I didn't mean.
No, 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 that's fine. January 9th is, would be five o'clock because that is a school committee meeting, January 9th.
Correct.
Right, but that was prior to, that's just a regular school committee meeting. Because that is just, that's the night that John will be doing an overview.
So it'll still just be six o'clock in January 9th?
It'll just be six o'clock. That's not the start of the budget session.
Okay. I'll have all those slides printed in the back of.
That isn't a school committee night?
It is.
It is.
So if we're presenting the budget overview to the warrant finance committee and selectmen, we still need to be here at five for our meeting?
Yes, I would say yes.
We'll hard up the meeting, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
It's really.
So it's, it will be the meeting pretty much?
It'll be the meeting. So if we met at six, they meet at five, they can be here.
They're fine.
We just meet at our regular time. Most of the meeting will be absorbed with our budget goals, philosophies, yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay. There won't be any number crunching that night. It's not numbers.
It's not details. It's just an overview.
Got a bunch of weeks in a row here.
She's going to send it out again anyway.
Well, we'll put it in my.
I'm going to rack your brain so much there.
We can have that tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, I'll have it sent out.
We can have it tomorrow with all the new dates.
Yeah, but you could always get those.
It's actually not even really new dates, new times.
It's just times.
So maybe when you make, when you make this out for us, if you could put in the like, school committee meeting five.
Yes.
Budget meeting six.
Right. And that's what I was going to do, yes, to separate it out.
Yeah, separate it out. Yeah, that would be very helpful. Okay, all done with the timeline. Then let's go on to the recommendation on the SMLC participation.
You bet. This is something that I've been working with the school committee and informing you almost weekly with my weekly updates to the school committee and Jeanette, Judy, Kim and myself went to a meeting in Saco a couple of weeks ago that was hosted by the York County Superintendent's. We had Drummond Woodson there to kind of talk to us a little bit about the application process and kind of the opportunities and challenges. But in a nutshell, I sent you a memo with some background material. This is something that I've been watching for about two and a half months now. And not to get too deeply into it because we've talked about it quite a bit, I'll just go to my recommendations. The background and the information has been attached. If you had a chance to take a look at that, no new surprises. But I've listed six reasons that I'll just mention at this meeting that I recommend that the Acton School Department not seek membership in a school management leadership center this year due to, and I abbreviate my six reasons. One is unknown costs. It's not, it's not clear what the cost would be and that, what is clear is that, for example, the SMLC must pay 45% of an executive director's salary if a new position would be created. And if Acton goes into an agreement, we would be at some level on the hook for some of that, depending on how many other partners we have because the state agreed to pay 55% of that new position. Along with, I put positions because usually that kind of a level job needs some sort of support. And of course, there's another unknown cost. So that's why you see the S in parentheses.
And an office and a computer.
The penalties associated, number two, with the reduction in state subsidy, and I, and I give Kim a lot of credit this, are zero for the Acton School Department because we currently receive zero through the EPS formula. So a lot of the, the pieces where the state says you'll get a reduction in cost in these areas and they spell it out in the background material that I gave you. Kim went, took a day and went to Augusta and worked with their financial person and was in connection with me, communication with me that whole day. And Friday night, we had a long conversation. I said, you sure? And she says, I'm sure and I'll show you on Monday. So in bigger districts, that might lose a certain amount. See, the EPS formula is a lot of things go into that. So the pieces that go into that in a bigger district, they could lose up to $40 or $50 a student in a certain area of their state subsidy. Well, because of the way we're set up and we're a low receiver, in fact, it's one way or the other. So the hand is forced in some communities through a reduction in state subsidy. My point is, that's not what's happening here in Acton. The third one is a commitment to an authorization from MDOE to be part of an SMLC. SMLC is binding, which means the only way to dissolve our membership. So if you go into this and you're like, well, it really doesn't fit. The only way you can get out is to show that leaving does not leave an economic impact on the remaining partners, which means you can't get out because if you're paying in and you leave, I guess you could leave, but you still owe your mortgage. That's what it sounds like. At least that's how I read this, so there's no real clear lines about how to get out. Number four is the development of an SMLC model is designed with large schools in mind. And we already, that second part of this, number four, is we're already doing a lot of what the state's pushing for. Small districts by nature have to do what's called inter-local agreements. That's a law that's already in place and we're already accessing it by sending our kids to Sanford High School and by sharing fuel costs with Sanford. By having a bus agreement with two towns.
Food service.
Food service, a shared director. At one point, we had a shared special ed director. So those kinds of inter-local agreements for a small community just make sense. What's interesting is there's a lot of small communities in Maine. The big communities of where we live now, we happen to be a small community in a big county. But a lot of Northern Maine has districts like this and they do a lot of inter-local sharing. So we're already kind of where the state wants us to be. The fifth one is, what I really learned at that Saco meeting is the timeline for this is super aggressive. Almost impossible to probably meet at this point. And I'm not sure, I'll know next Monday. It's on the agenda for the York County Superintendents. I don't know of any other district that's doing this right now. Nobody said we're doing it. Maybe next Monday, there'll be a couple in York County that say they're doing it, but I haven't heard from anybody that anybody's doing this in our part of the state. And lastly, just the statement, the incentives and curtailments put forth by MDOE do not outweigh the potential cost to Acton's local share and loss of autonomy. With that, those are my recommendations. It's your decision. But I thought, I talked to Judy, we had a long conversation about this and the board's been pretty attentive to this, that it makes sense that although we don't have to tell the state in any formal way, but I think it should go on the record that you, you know, either accept, I hope, or, or make amendments to, or not accept my recommendation to not pursue an SMLC for this year. I think we should sit on the bench, not be the first in and watch this and see what happens because there'll be other opportunities to do this. I just think that the risks highly outweigh the guarantees to do it this year.
It's in your product line. I want to avoid the factory defects.
And I think one of the things too that I heard from somebody in another district is that these inter-local agreements that you make have to be new ones. They, they will not take into consideration the fact that we're already doing all these things with Sanford. They have to be new incentives that are put in place and how much more can we put in place than we have already?
And to clarify, so my, the definitions are fuzzy. To share administrative cost, that is so broad. Is this basically the administrations, the central offices would be consolidated across districts?
They want, they want to keep it broad to keep it creative is how they pronounce, that's how they explain that because we ask those questions.
So it's not dissimilar from what a lot of, what happens in New Hampshire with their school administrative units?
Well, even Drummond and Woodson, they didn't, they didn't have the answers either to a lot of this stuff. I mean, it's still very, still very vague, so.
Like Milton and Wakefield, Mill Mills, they had, they had two separate boards. Milton had their own board and Wakefield their own board, but they're the same school administrative unit.
Right.
Interesting.
That would be, that kind of situation would be something that you could present to MDOE and they would either bless it or not. But that's the creative thinking that, that's why they purposely left it vague so you could come up with some ideas.
They did say that the school committees would, would remain for each district as they are now.
Just like you said, yeah.
So, kind of crazy. But anyway.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the Acton School Department not partake in the School Management and Leadership Center for the school year 2018 to 2019.
Seconded. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to not participate for this coming school year. Any further discussion?
Thank you for the due diligence in figuring this out.
Thank you for brief participation.
Thank you, Kim, too.
Yes.
Figuring out what, yeah. Any, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Is there any old business?
Eight ones on there, but it's blank, so I think we just didn't cut eight one. Pulled it out, right, okay.
Okay.
That's it.
I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor?
I don't know what time you just picked the time for.
Seven twenty-five.
Seven twenty-five.
Thank you, everybody.